Okay, so we'll call the meeting to order. Mr. Zarzaki, please call roll.
Miss Chick that we know is trying to connect. Mr. Kuzno?
Present.
Mr. Dyer?
Present.
Mr. Quinto?
Present.
Ms. Infante?
Here.
Mr. Roman?
Here.
And Zarzaki, present. So we have six present, one trying to connect.
Okay, thank you. I make a motion to, on the agenda, to switch items nine and 10. New and unfinished business, just reverse those. I make a motion. Okay. Mr. Iquinto, was that you?
Oh, sir.
Who supported?
Brad did.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. We're going to call to the public.
Okay, Natalie, do you want to try and handle this one?
Please state your name and address and three-minute time limit. Thank you.
So just to restate, members of the public, if you'd like to speak, Natalie is going to acknowledge you, allow you to talk, and you'll have three minutes.
I'm also sending an email to Ms. Chick to see if I can give her the phone number in order to call into the meeting. Hopefully she'll be able to participate after that. So now we're going to do call to the public where anyone will have three minutes to speak and share their thoughts with the township. If it's about a specific agenda item, we would request that you wait until we get to that specific agenda item. But anything other than that, if anyone would like to talk at this time, please raise your hand, and I will unmute you, and you will have three minutes to talk.
Natalie, just a quick clarification. We actually don't have public hearings on the agenda. So now would be the time for all matters. Just anything people want to address the planning commission on, including any cases, now would be the time.
Got it. Okay, so at the time, I'm only seeing one hand raised. So Steve Grano, I am going to unmute you and allow you to talk at this time.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
Thanks so much. I'll make it brief. For those of you that I have not met before, Steve Grano from Chestnut Home Builders. I'm in Howell, Michigan, up here on Grand River, and actually our offices are in Brighton. We have had a contract for a couple of months now on the Leland Farm for a development that we contemplate to be comprised of apartments, single-family homes, a small assisted-living facility, and a little bit of commercial on the corner. We've had a couple of discussions with Paul, your planner, and are just trying to keep you in the loop of kind of what we're doing. We haven't made any proposals before the township yet. And what we're doing is contemplating a rezoning and PUD sort of track that if everyone agrees that's the appropriate method, we'll engage our engineer at the appropriate time and then bring the planning commission our presentation formally. I just thought tonight it'd be a good idea to give you an update on where we're at. Our thought is there, since there is sewer but no water, that our first order of business was just to see if there is a water supply there that would support a development. So we've been working with the state of Michigan, with Peerless, who is a well-drilling company and geological engineer, and with Boss Engineering. We have drilled a couple of wells, just preliminarily, to see if there is any water there. Because if there's no water there, there's no point in doing a site plan or apply for a rezoning and waste everybody's time. So we did get, we did get the well logs back. There is some water there. The well-driller's opinion is there is a good aquifer, but it will require multiple wells in multiple locations on the property. And that decision is made by the head of the Eagle folks, Water Division. Her name is Andrea. And her position is to yea or nay water supplies, public water supplies. The township voted last meeting, I believe, on whether or not the township wanted to own and operate the water supply, should it ever come to be. No, we're not owning water supply. So that was required. Finish our well drilling. Now it's really up to them whether they say there is a water supply that's viable. If she says yes, 12-inch well and 72-hour pump down. If that's successful, then we'll engage the engineer and bring our proposals to the township in a formal way downstream. Hopefully, hopefully that's within 30 to 60 days from now. I just wanted to orient you to what we're doing, invite you to check us out. Home Builders online. I am happy to show people the project that we're trying to build there. That's not crossing that. We'll see exactly what we have in mind. It's an active community. We finished last year in Howell at the corner of Mason. So that's it. Just wanted to say hello. I'm still out here and look forward to working in your community as a new developer, and I'll try to keep you informed as we go.
Okay, thank you, Steve. I'm going to remute you now. So I'm not seeing any other hands raised at this time. Are there any other members of the public on this call that would like to speak at this time? Okay, I'm not seeing anything else. So Chair?
Yes.
Um, let's see. Okay, not seeing anything else at this time. So if we want to close the call to the public at this time?
We will. Thank you. We'll go on to clarifications from commissioners. Any? Just like to thank Mr. Grano for the update. Anyone else?
He said his development, I was trying to write it down, was presently in Howell at what corner? And what was the name of it? Anybody else catch that?
Chestnut Crossing.
For a development that was going to be similar, he said. Chestnut, okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll move on. Everyone received the correspondence. It was a residence opinion. So we had that included in the packet. There's no public hearings tonight. We'll go to reports to committees. Board of Trustees report, Ms. Chick. Hopefully she can join us. I can't hear her, but hopefully she can address that.
Oh, I'm unmuted.
There you go. Here, Janet.
You. The Board of Trustees has not met since our last meeting.
Thank you. ZBA report, Mr. Kuzno.
Likewise, ZBA has not met since our last meeting also.
Anything from staff, Ms. Bird?
She's muted right now.
None, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lippens, planning consultant report.
Yeah, I want to keep it brief tonight, but one thing I did want to mention is I've been working with township manager on prepping these cases. Should Planning Commission forward these cases to the board, the next step will be to place the cases on a board agenda for consideration of the conditional use. As I understand it, and trustee Chick can clarify if I miss anything here, but I think the board is anticipating allotting each case that the Planning Commission forwards 10 minutes to make a presentation. So since we have all of our applicants on the agenda tonight, I thought it would be good to let them know that we anticipate, if any cases Planning Commission does forward to the board, that we would be placing them on the September 22nd board agenda. And the board would want the applicants to prepare a 10-minute presentation as part of that. For tonight, of course, also, the three new business cases, we'd give them an opportunity to also present. And I believe last week, we let people to take five minutes from each case and do it all at one time. Chair, I think we would allow them to do that tonight too, but I'm sure you may have questions also for the old business cases, and we'll handle those as well. But just wanted to briefly say, we are working with the board to coordinate also handling these cases. Or I'm working with the manager to coordinate how the board will want these cases placed on the agenda, so. Also, I sometimes let you know that we have some other stuff coming up, and we do have, you know, more cases. So I anticipate we'll have a good agenda for the 16th this month as well.
Thank you. Parks and Recreation report, Mr. Iquinto.
Nothing additional since our last meeting, sir. Thank you.
This is Infante, Downtown Planning Group.
Downtown Planning Group met during our last meeting, so I'm sorry I can't report on it.
Thank you. So moving on, we're going to new business. And we'll start with case. I'll make a motion to open case JPC 200010, recommend to approve. Approve with conditions or deny the request of pure roots. LLC 9876 Main Street. Oh, Mr. Iquinto?
I will be abstaining from items 10, all of 10, and all of nine, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. 9876 Main Street, Whitmore Lake, for conditional use to develop the existing structure into recreational retail and provisioning center. Recreation, recreational retail and provisioning centers are permitted as conditional land use in WLDD District per Article 12, Section 36-340 of the zoning ordinance. Parcel numbers are B 0206105002, part of B 0205223007, and B 0205223008. And the parcels are zone WLDD Whitmore Lake Downtown District, GC General Commercial, and SR2 Single Family Residential District. Retail and provisioning centers are not permitted in the SR2 Single Family District.
And Chair, if I may, through the chair? I need to actually make a correction on the agenda to this case. If you recall, the applicant removed the SR2 site from their site plan application and from their conditional use application. And we discussed that when we held the public hearing on this. So it's a clerical error, and I should have caught it in my review, that this should have been removed from the agenda. So just wanted to clarify for any members of the public tonight. And certainly we'll get this addressed in any future agendas. But that parcel has been removed from the application, from both applications, from the site plan and from the conditional use application.
Okay, since I don't know the parcel number, you'll have to also note that when we get to the site plan review, also, Mr. Lippens.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
I'll support your motion.
Thank you. Support. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so we have discussion. I'd like to give the applicant or the representative a 10-minute time slot to present what they would like regarding both the conditional land, conditional use and the site plan. Mr. Lippens, would you like to take it from there? Or would Ms. Bond do it?
I mean, I, no, I think I would, I'm happy to present the case. So the Pure Roots development is located, what's that? Sorry. The Pure Roots development located at 9876 Main Street is a lakefront property north of the site, the North Village site on the east side of Main Street. The applicant is proposing a limited amount of parking, updates to the building. Additionally, proposing reusing and possibly opening up for public use, the docks as a public amenity. You know, we are recommending approval of the, of the application and discussed it a little bit at the public hearing. So I might want to turn it over to the applicant to get their presentation. And I know you'll like to have questions for myself and the engineer. Marcus is here as well tonight. So in the, in the audience, we have the applicant, Rennie George, and I will promote Rennie to a panelist. And then, Rennie, maybe you can also let us know who else from your team is here. See, Rennie, I'm going to unmute you. Here you are. Mr. George, how are you doing this evening?
Good, thank you.
Are there others from your group that you'd like me to promote to the panel?
No, just me.
All right, great.
So, no, I want to thank you for your time. Pure Roots, you know, thank you for clarifying that we are not, we are not using the SR2 parcel and leaving bigger buffer between residential. Not going to use that for this specific use. But, you know, we're excited for the project in Norfield. When we went to search for this as the applicant, you know, we currently have 14 sites that are approved. We operate an operating dispensary in the city of Ann Arbor. This site to us, when we looked at it, followed those local zoning ordinance and the local ordinance is to locate the site. And we were looking for a couple of things. One, parking that we could dedicate to the retail site, and two, access to traffic and visibility. So in terms of, you know, having this site being unique, where we have dedicated parking that was ample for the retail use was very important to us. You know, there's a lot of other locations that, you know, street parking will clog up a number of retail issues that happen through high-blossy retail. This site uniquely had parking on-site, which is very important to us. We plan on building a new building that is apothecary style. One of the, one of the public comments was that when they looked at the elevation, they could not tell this was a dispensary, and that's exactly what the look and feel we're going for. There's a number of people that put forth elevations. This elevation is the exact replica of exactly what we built and operate in the city of Ann Arbor. We are, you know, looking forward to using this location to service the area north of Ann Arbor. We believe that our application meets a criteria set forth by the zoning ordinances and by the local published application guidelines. We're excited to be part of the community. We had a service event that we participated in with the park and the North Village Park, and we want to dedicate our 3% to 5% contribution from revenue to the construction of the amphitheater and the North Village Park development. Would like to remind that we are partnered with a billion and a half private equity real estate development fund. Our partners specialize in doing commercial, industrial, and retail development. And one thing that we do like to do when we come into a community is see viable development projects and get involved. So as we did in Ann Arbor, we purchased three more sites just for normal retail development once we are in the market. We'd also like to point out that, you know, we're looking at a total of $3 million investment into this particular site. We are adding sidewalks to increase the walkability for the community. We are going to support walkable beachfront, especially on our property. And as we are not offering access from our parking to the docks, we believe that the local residents in the local areas that are being, you know, that are voicing their concerns about individuals parking on their parcel and going to the boats will no longer be an issue since we are allowing the docks to be there so people can tie off and come into downtown. We are, but we are not allowing individuals to park to access boats. So we will use the docks for the community's benefit, but we will not have, you know, individuals park and walk across our property to access the boats, which will alleviate the number of issues that were brought in the public meeting. And from a security standpoint, we want to dedicate the parking to our customers that are retail customers only. So into that effort, we are planning on staffing and managing the parking lot with a customer service representative that will be checking in customers by identification purposes to get access to the parking. So I think a lot of those SOPs and and different procedures will alleviate the number of concerns that were brought by the public. We are, we do have a labor peace agreement with the Teamsters Union, and we're proud to support the local 299 Teamsters Golf Audi for Autism. We have a 3% above the local contribution agreement. We have a 3% to charitable organizations within the 20-mile radius. So we actively provide, you know, incentivize our workers and our employees to get involved with local charities, and we financially support local charities. Currently, in all of our sites, we employ 85% of the staff within a 10- to 15-mile radius of the retail location, and we will give precedent to anybody that is a member of the community for employment. Our employment includes $15 minimum pay with benefits, Blue Cross Blue Shield, life insurance, paid sick leave, and vacation time, once you're a vested employee. In addition, we believe that our quiet enjoyment of the site by the design and the nature of our business, as we said, high-end apothecary style, will allow us to be a fruitful part of the community and rehab that to buildings that exist into something that looks very modern, something that you want in your city. So I'd like to thank you for your consideration, and if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Thank you, Rennie. And I just, I did want to note, as since this is the conditional use review, that our recommendation to approve is subject to the conditions noted in our letter. And we are recommending that Planning Commission, like we discussed at the last meeting, if you include, include or decide to give precedence at Planning Commission in a motion to, to this, to Pure Roots, that you support it with three findings based on merit-based criteria and tied to the conditional use criteria to support your finding that the marijuana facility voluntary local development agreement score of six and supplemental scoring evaluation score is 19 has substantively met the Township merit-based scoring criteria. And in addition, we are noting that there are four applications with the same score. So we would also recommend three additional findings, that Pure Roots was the best of the tied scores as well. And as we discussed at the last meeting, it's certainly, Planning Commission may defer to the board to establish those or include findings in approval. And we would just recommend that in Planning Commission motion, they recommend that, that Planning Commission or that the board actually make those findings as well. I think the other thing that I've noted in my review is more related to the site plan. But I did make notes in my application that there are portions of the parcel or of the site that fall within Washtenaw County right-of-way that are also part of a third parcel that's not improved, included in this application. And if Planning Commission has any questions about that, you know, Marcus and I can, can discuss it. But we believe that parcel falls, falls within the Washtenaw County right-of-way, and thus is controlled by Washtenaw County.
Right. Ms. Lippens, I'd like to visit the site plan under case B, if we could. So we'll just contain this one to the conditional use.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. So with that, any questions of the applicant or Mr. Lippens or comments regarding this one? Mr. Kuzno?
I have a question for Mr. Lippens. Can you tell me which, which of the, which point of the 20 points from the scoring sheet that they did not get? Is that something you can get your hands on? I'm curious about number four on your conditional use comments. It says will be compatible with the Township Land Use Development Plan. That's, that's the criterion. You said the Township Future Land Use Plan details a site surrounding areas mixed use. And I'm pretty sure that under one of the, under, under public safety, parks and distance of 500 feet from parks and other things is a point. And I'm curious to know if they got the full points for the public safety or not. Because it seems to me like this property is within 500 feet for the future use of the North Village property.
Commissioner Kuzno, I believe that that is the point that they did not receive of the 20 points. But if you give me a second, I will verify that while other questions.
That's what I'm looking for. I'd like to verify that.
I will verify it as, as the conversation goes on, so.
Any other, Ms. Chick?
Yep, under the recommendations, you indicate that the applicant should get an agreement put in place for the docks and approved by the Township attorney. When would that agreement be needed? Before or after? At what point in the process?
It could be done after board approval. If the board, if the Planning Commission makes a recommendation to approve the conditional use included is in our recommendation would be a condition that all of the state requirements and any remaining local requirements are completed within 180 days, and that is condition three. All townships, township, county, and state regulations are met, and approvals are provided within 100 days of board approval of conditional use. And that failure to complete that within 180 days would void the conditional use approval. I think executing a development agreement, which would be similar to what we're discussing for shared access, would fall into that category. But I think in concept, though, the ideas that Mr. George is presenting tonight are consistent with what we've heard from his group. And I, our attorney is here. If you have any questions specifically about what it would take for us to enter into that agreement, we could ask Mariah to chime in as well.
Okay, no, I'm good. I understand. Thank you.
Anyone else have comments, questions? I'll ask a couple then. This one's from Mr. Lippens. Again, we're dealing with the language in the, in the review. The adult use, what did we say? What did we settle on after last meeting? Is it, will it be retailer, marijuana retailer, retail?
Rec.
Go ahead. I'm sorry.
I believe the language we want to use that would be consistent with the ordinance is recreational retail. And this letter was drafted before our, our conversation last time, so the newer letters, I've used that. And then prior to going to the board, I'll make that revision we discussed. But for consistency, just to restate for anyone who wants that clarification, I, I think it is important to make the clarifications on the case that the language that is in our ordinance is recreational retail, and adult use is a common synonym for adult use marijuana, but it's not the terminology we use in the ordinance. So we want to be clear.
Thank you, Mr. Lippens. And I'm also doing it so it's on the record.
Yes.
Thank you. So I will bring it up each, you know, and I know this, this one is an older review, so this one includes it, and I did notice on the following ones, different. Mr. George, I have a question on the conditional use application, which was originally back in July, so I know things have changed since then. Can you please clarify the building addition that was marked on that? Is it renovation or new construction? And if you could please clarify what existing structures will remain, and will there be demo and new construction, just so we get it clear and for the record?
Yeah, essentially, conceptually, what we submitted is keeping one wall active and building the three walls, so it'll be a 95% new construction of the facility. So we'll keep the one wall on the south up and redo the entire building. So it would be classified mostly as a new construction. So we will be pulling permits for demolition.
So the, that, that is the existing southernmost structure. There's another structure.
Which is the Marina one, which will, which will be demoed.
That'll be demoed. Okay. Thank you for the clarification. And I know you, you touched upon this, Mr. George, in your presentation, but can you go in a little more detail regarding the intent of, it's on item A2 on page three of the report about docks for public access? I know you touched upon it, but perhaps you can give us a more thorough explanation and what type of operation it is, if you could describe it?
Yeah, so Pure Roots is agreeing to maintain the docks on a seasonal basis for day use. So we would essentially keep it for the benefit of the community and keep, you know, water activity and encourage the use of the lake. So anybody that has a boat on the lake that can get in from multiple points of entry can dock on those docks. We will, you know, keep it insured and up to code, and every season put it out there. We will also staff and maintain that there is no consumption anywhere on our property, which will be the docks also. And we will keep that for the pure enjoyment of the community and to increase traffic downtown into the, into the retail district. But we won't allow individuals to park and access the docks.
Okay. Thank you. And the last point I'd like to make again, Mr. Lippens, under A6 on page three, there's also an adult use that needs to be changed, so you can just keep it for your notes. Are there any other commissioner questions or comments on this case?
Chair, at this time, I did, I did have time while you were asking a few questions to pull up Pure Roots scoring sheet and verify that the one point that they did miss was under the public safety criteria for being within 1,000 feet of, of a park.
An answer to Mr. Kuzno's question.
Correct. Thank you.
Thank you. No other discussion? Okay. Seeing none, I will make motion for the Planning Commission to recommend the Township Board approve the conditional use subject to the conditions on the McKenna review and/or the Planning Commission review for case JPC 200010, and defer the matter of precedence to the Township Board.
Of support.
Or by Ms. Chick. Any questions, comments on the motion? Ms. Infante, none?
None. I agree.
Thank you. In that case, we will go to roll call vote. Mr. Zarzaki.
All right. Ms. Chick?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzno?
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer?
Yes.
Ms. Infante?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Zarzaki, yes. Six approve, one abstain.
Thank you, Mr. Zarzaki. Okay, moving on, we will go to nine, excuse me, 10, it'd be 10B. Make a motion, open case, JPC 200010 for discussion. It's to recommend approve, approve with conditions or deny the request of Pure Roots, 9876 Main, Whitmore Lake, for a site plan approval to develop the existing structure into recreational retail provisioning center. Recreational retail provisioning centers are permitted as a conditional land use in the WLDD District per Article 12, Section 36-340 of the zoning ordinance. And the parcel numbers are B 0206105002 and B 0205223008. That excludes the SR2, Mr. Lippens. I looked at it. And the parcels are zoned WLDD Whitmore Lake Downtown District, GC General Commercial. Or by Ms. Chick, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? None opposed. Mr. Lippens, we will go to you and go over your site plan review, followed by Mr. McNamara from OHM.
Thank you, Chair. So we've already discussed some of the site features, building renovation, teardown of one of the structures that's on the site, improvements to parking, landscaping, creation of public sidewalk along the front of the site, public access, not via automobile. So I thank Mr. George for that clarification, but a place where residents can tie off and The, the issues that I kind of wanted to cover, you know, one, we are recommending that the lots be combined, you know, these are old lots and they've been used as, as one functional parcel. So it's a good time to, to clean it up and just clarify how the ownership exists between those parcels. The other issue that I noted, if you're reviewing the site plan, and I spent a good amount of time looking at it, is there's one parcel that really is a little confusing because it goes across the Washtenaw County right-of-way. And I know Marcus might be able to chime in, in on this, but in, in townships, you know, it's frequent that the parcels extend into the right-of-way, but the Washtenaw County controls and owns all of that right-of-way. So any access or approval to that part of the site, I believe falls to Washtenaw County. And I, I think you might want to ask the engineer to confirm that, but that's, that's my reading of the site. And I have noted that in my letter, just to help clarify for Planning Commissioners, if you're looking at these parcels and trying to see, you know, how they relate to each other, you might, you might have had that question, and I spent a good amount of time looking at it to make sure that I understood what I was looking at as well. So, um, the, so with our recommendation to approve, we are also having the, the condition that it's subject to board approval of a conditional use for the recreational retail and provisioning center. And that if, for some reason, the applicant doesn't obtain that, that, you know, we're recommending that we are, you know, work with the applicant to see if we find another suitable use for the site improvements as proposed. You know, these are, this is a good, good redevelopment, and we're certainly supportive of the type of improvements the applicant is recommending to make on the site. We dealt a little bit with the access agreement. I do think the condition that that access agreement be approved by our Township Attorney would be the, the way to go. And then that condition, I think, should be also attached to the site plan. So, yep, maybe we can hear from Marcus. I think that covers most, most of my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Lippens. We'll go to Mr. McNamara.
Evening, Chair, Planning Commission. Yeah, so our biggest comment was related to the, the right-of-way, and as Paul mentioned, it's a little bit odd there. And I did talk with the engineer that did the survey for the work. So that, that was originally MDOT right-of-way. That was heated to Washtenaw County, and 23 was improved years ago. So he did do some extra due diligence, and is confident that what he's shown on the plans is, is accurate. It appears to be to us as well. That said, though, so if you look at the site plan, the right-of-way actually encroaches onto the site quite a ways in what's functionally, you know, used for the site circulation and parking today. So they are going to be restriping a lot and using that portion of the right-of-way, which is separated from Main Street with curb. So it, it should be fine, but ultimately it will be Washtenaw County that will have to review and approve that. And as part of that permit process with the county, we did know that the, the north drive is really wide, and it's pretty close to the intersection as well. So it's possible that the county may ask for some geometric improvements at that drive. And then there, there is an existing driveway on the south side of the site as well, which isn't utilized, but it wasn't, it didn't appear from the, the submittal that they were proposing to, it wasn't proposing to do there. So if that access is not going to be needed, it should, it should be physically separated, unless the fire department has a need to have an emergency. All of those, those are all details that really have to be worked out from the applicant in conjunction directly with Washtenaw County. And the one other comment that we had, they acknowledged, we asked for the utilities to be clarified, especially for the thing that's proposed to be a total demolition, but in fact, both, we want to make sure that water and sewers proper, properly abandoned when they do the building. And the, I think that was in our report.
Sorry, you kind of faded out there at the end, Mr. McNamara. Could you repeat the last part?
That, that concludes our report.
Thank you, sir. And I want to make note for the record, we did receive the fire department review with no concerns. So with that, any questions, comments from other commissioners on the site plan? Mr. Dwyer?
Maybe I'm missing it, but I don't see how people are getting from the docks to the public right-of-way. How are they getting around the property? Is there a dedicated sidewalk? Would there be some sort of barrier or separation from the sidewalk to the provisioning center? How's that going to be achieved?
So I could answer that. We, we will stripe the parking lot for public access to the sidewalk that we are putting in.
Are you maintaining, I see two docks, three docks. Are you maintaining all three?
Yes. That's the intent.
So there's going to be some sort of, or, or the, everything that's there stays now, so they, the people go laterally to some striped crosswalk across the parking lot. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And they come out square?
To the sidewalk that we're proposing.
Okay. Along the frontage?
Yep.
Okay.
So, um, just to make sure I understand, so I, I would say that the, you know, from my read, the, the dock access is, you know, through informal walking through the parking lot to the sidewalk. But I'm, I'm hearing Mr. George say that they would stripe basically a crosswalk across the parking lot if Planning Commission requests it?
That's correct.
I'm surprised he's proposing it.
So is, would be my take that that would have to be a condition of site plan approval, that you would like that added to the site plan if you would? And I think, I certainly would say, you know, vehicle speeds in, in parking lots are slow, they're intended to be, you know, because they're parking lots and vehicles can't actually speed up in parking lots, or they're really intended to be shared spaces. And this is definitely a site that hasn't, it's site constrained. There's, it's not a big site. So I, I'm not a, I wouldn't be opposed to some, adding some striping of where we want pedestrians to walk for circulation. Marcus could also chime in to, to let you know how we'd like that done. But I didn't specifically ask for it as part of, as part of my review.
Would Mr. McNamara like to comment on that?
No, just to say I agree, there should be, I think it would be wise to have the, a condition that the pedestrian route be signed striped or some other manner that is clear for safety.
Thank you. Mr. Dwyer?
Well, I, I think my point was those docks are some distance apart. You wouldn't have multiple people coming off those docks and just wandering across the parking lot to the sidewalk without some sort of means of shepherding them in a safe manner, in a, in a route that you want them to go. They're just going to wander around across the parking lot any way they want, and I don't think that's the best idea. I think something needs to be done about, you know, channeling people coming off those docks to a proper crossing point in, in a manner that you want them to go, as opposed to letting them be off to their own devices.
So we will have a full-time parking lot attendant that can and will direct traffic to make sure that there's safety in the parking lot. We have that for all of our sites. So individuals that are coming in off the dock can be directed by a full-time parking
Ms. Chick?
So the issue of the right-of-way is that realistic to expect or hope that we could get some kind of opinion from Washtenaw County Road Commission before the September 22nd
Rennie, have you submitted to the county yet?
No, we have not, but we will to get an issue on the right-of-way. I mean, essentially, you know, there's rocks or something separating that access point right now.
Right.
It's not being used for circulation of traffic currently. So, I mean, we're not opposed to, if they don't grant us that, to just bury it out and use our normal entrance and exits.
Anyone else?
I wouldn't expect that you'll get, that you'll be able to get a review out of the county that quickly, but I, I don't know for sure. But ultimately, I mean, if, if you condition, as you normally do, any approvals on, you know, all permits from all the permitting agencies, if any of those permitting agencies dictate changes that are significant, then the applicant has to bring the plan back to the planning commission, if it's a substantial change.
Mr. Kuzno?
So I see as the existing boat launch, and I'm presuming from the discussion that 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 will no longer be used. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Is it going to be somehow demoed or taken out of there? Or what's the plan there? And what's, what is the, well, I guess, what would, what's, what's the implications with Eagle these days or DEQ, whatever they call themselves these days?
I think the site plan calls for us to level it off and landscape it out. But, you know, obviously we would be getting the right permits and, you know, that, you know, we've done these in the past and they've not have any implications on filling that piece of land and using it for a regular retail buildup.
You've done Marina and provisioning centers before?
No, I mean, like I said, we're the 1.5 billion on a real estate fund. That's done, you know, over 185 developments across 18 states. So we've come across marinas and doing developments on marinas, especially in the city of New York, New Jersey. So essentially for a launch that's that small, it's just a depression in the, in the, in the sand. I mean, it's consequently of no impact to fill that.
Okay, and then to further discussion on the the corralling of boaters. I mean, what if you had some sort of a, I don't know, a fence of some sort that kept all the boaters on the shore side of the property until they got past your building to get out to the walkway heading toward town if they intend to go through your property to get to town? And/or the future park that'll be over there?
I don't understand the question. Can you repeat that?
Instead of having people wander across your parking lot, maybe you could put a fence up, maybe a nice one, not a chain link fence, but some sort of a split rail fence or a plastic, you know, vinyl fence that kind of creates a walkway along the shoreline to get south of your property and then up to the roadway from there. That's just a thought. I'm not guessing it as a visit.
Listen, we're 100% open to any recommendations of the planning commission for the township here to figure out a safe egress for boating residents or participants who come across the property and get into the act of downtown, including, you know, charitably contributing to the crosswalk and development of the crosswalk across over. So we're, we're open to that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other commissioners?
I'd just like to pipe in to say that I believe there are a lot of variables up in the air that are not within the purview of the planning commission to really make determinations on. And Mr. McNamara's comment completely resolved my concerns.
Thank you, Ms. Infante. Anyone else? The only things again, Mr. Lippens, is the the word corrections with the adult use in the appropriate areas, the first paragraph in under zoning and use and recommendation number one. And as far as I'm concerned, the only question I had for the applicant was regarding the OHM report conclusion and recommendation number one. Applicant, can Mr. George keep please clarify the intent of the South Drive? So that we, we understand more and perhaps Mr. McNamara can approach, approach that differently. Do you intend to keep that, not use it? What is the intent?
So I think Mr. McNamara was mentioning that this is a Washington County right of way issue. Currently, I don't believe that that is currently used. According to our engineer review, there was rocks preventing people coming in and getting onto the property. So, I mean, you know, we believe that our site has enough of a planned egress and ingress that that's inconsequential for us. So either the, either Washington County tells us no, and then we just block it off so that there is no access, or they say yes, and then, you know, we'll maintain it and stripe appropriately. I can tell you, the county is always, or typically is in favor of reducing curb cuts if possible. So if it's not, if you don't need it for your internal circulation, my suggestion would be to update the plan to show that the, you'll, you know, be eliminating that before you submit to the county. And then, then you wouldn't need to worry about that second access or an easement from the member parcel.
Thank you, Mr. McNamara. I think that's a helpful clarification. Mr. Kuzno?
Just real quick, on that same, on that South curb cut, is that parcel, one of the parcels that got removed from the, the site plan? Or, because it looks like it's off the property boundary, if I'm reading this correctly, unless...
It is off the property. It's not part of the property. And frankly, I just don't think it's large enough for a car to pass through. So.
You know, it's not even under your control? Like that property does not, is not part of the, okay, so it's not even, okay, somebody else's property altogether.
Well, yeah, the, the curb cut is, is the frontage of the parcel south of them. And that's exactly our point, right? As it stands now, the paving is contiguous across the two parcels. So if they're going to leave the paving like that where a vehicle could access, seek formal agreements for that. If it's not needed, then site plan work on their parcel, they can, you know, physically disconnect, put a, something, just a couple of rocks that are sitting there now would be much more finished and appropriate treatment for that if it's an unneeded action.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Also to kind of add an additional clarification there. You know, part of that parcel actually extends across the street too. So there's a lot of kind of issues with parcels there. But that, I would say, is the frontage for the applicant's parcel. And it is firmly a part of the right of way. So the applicant, I believe, could seek permission from the county to close that that driveway cut, or at least the part of that driveway cut that accesses their parcel. And the county, I believe, would be the sole person who could approve that. I don't think that they need permission from another parcel owner. And I think that's part of their parcel. So that's my interpretation is that the county owns the right of way. And their parcel is the parcel that's fronting on that right of way. So I don't, Marcus, I know you, you mentioned you called the surveyor and I think in townships, it's just one of those things where the parcels go into the right of way. But the, the right of way is the right of way and it is controlled by Washington County. That's my point.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, I'll make motion for the planning commission to table the site plan recommendation until the applicant receives conditional use approval with conditions from the township board for case. JPC 200010.
Support.
Supported by Mrs. Infante. Mr. Lippens, we're pursuing it to, on this approach that we will table the site plan until further approval from the board. And then revisit the site plan after that. Very good. Got a thumbs up.
Yes.
So we have support on that clarification. Anyone have questions, comments on that motion? Seeing none, Mr. Zarzaki, please do a roll call.
Ms. Chick?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzno?
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer?
Yes.
Ms. Infante?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Zarzaki, yes. Six approved, one abstained.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. George.
Thank you.
With that, we will move on to item 10C. Is make a motion to open case for discussion case, JPC 200006. Recommend to approve, approve with conditions or deny the request of RTMC Enterprise 50 East North Territorial Road with more like for conditional use to develop the existing structure into recreational retail and provisioning center. Recreational retail and provisioning centers are permitted as a conditional land use in the GC General Commercial District per Article 14, Section 36-391 of the zoning ordinance. Parcel number is B0220300032 and zone GC General Commercial District. Again, we'll go to Mr. Lippens review, and then we will give the applicant or the representative a 10-minute window to discuss both the conditional use and the site plan.
One support?
Support by Ms. Infante?
Chick.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Chick. Any questions on that? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed? Mr. Lippens?
Thank you, Chair. Site proposed by Northern Trellis is located on F50 East North Territorial Road. And I think similarly, we are recommending approval of the conditional use subject to any, any public comments made on the site. And then, of course, that state regulations are met. County regulations are met, township regulations are met, and proof of all licensures and relevant standards have been provided within 180 days. Additionally, we've noted that this site had an MFVLDA score of eight and a supplemental scoring evaluation of 20. We are recommending, and I know planning commission has said in the past, they'll prefer to defer review of or findings related to any precedents for the, the site as part of the conditional use review to the board. But we are recommending that at least three findings be stated about this proposal related to the conditional use standards to support a decision to approve the conditional use. You know, additionally, if the board were to approve other sites, you know, there are only three available for recreational retail and three available for provisioning. We'd recommend the board table action to allow us to talk with, talk with the applicant to see if there's another use that could be pursued on the site. We did, this applicant spent a good amount of time between our first public hearing on July 15th and, and this meeting tonight, incorporating the comments that the engineer and myself provided on the, the first review. And so there was an adder to the packet that had both the site plan revisions and reviews from the engineer and myself that were posted earlier today. So if, just noting for anyone in the public, if you're looking at the packet in one additional information about this applicant, there's an adder posted on the website for you to pull up as well. Other things, you know, the, the site is proposing a good amount of landscaping improvements, exterior renovations and facade improvements, upgrades to stormwater processing, upgrades to the paving. And really a very quality facelift to the site. And we're supportive of the improvements proposed. We do have a couple of comments on things we'd like to see happen as a condition for site plan approval. And some that are not necessarily conditions, but recommendations. One of the things we've noted is that there's a circulation, shared circulation between this site and an adjacent site between Whitmore Lake Road and North Territorial Road. We're kind of strongly recommending that an access agreement be entered into. But we did note that this site controls the driveway to North Territorial and we find that sufficient access for the improvements proposed. So if that question comes up, I did make some comments on that. And then I think the other issue that I made comments on is there is an existing site or an existing sign on the site. And that we didn't have any details on the sign, so we weren't able to review it to see if it's in compliance with the current code. So we are recommending a condition that that sign be removed. If at the time when they want to update the site signage, it turns out that that is not in conformance. So we want that to be a condition of approval. That's, that sign will either be removed or brought in to conformance with the current standards at the time when they do pursue developing the signs and seeking permits for their signs.
Mr. Lippens?
Yes.
If I'm, if I'm not mistaken, I believe that's in your site plan review.
You are correct.
We're doing the conditional use only right now.
For sure. I'll revisit that when we move to site plan.
Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Lippens?
I'm here for questions. I think that covers what I wanted to present.
Thank you. I'd like to go to the applicant for a 10-minute window so that they can, or their representative, so they can discuss or give a presentation, brief presentation on their conditional use in their, in their site plan.
Thank you, Chair. I did promote Trent to a panelist. And Trent, I'm seeing Rob McCuren. I'll promote Rob to a panelist. Is there anyone else here you would like to speak this evening?
Yeah, we actually have our whole team here. So you should see Brian Kirschbaum, who is, lives in Northfield. You should see John Carlson. Of course, they may be in phone numbers. I'm not sure.
Looking for John. Anyone else?
Yes, and then we have our two design professionals, Brian Howard and Brad Parlata.
I see Brian. Brian, I'm promoting you to panelist. I see Brad. Brad, I am promoting you to panelist. And I think I missed John. I have a John in the audience spelled J-O-N.
That's him.
All right, let me look for John. I promoted J-O-N, John, to panelist. Do I have everybody?
I think so.
All right.
Okay. Well, yeah, when we come to these presentations, I guess we come with the whole squad. So you get to, you get to meet all of us. My thoughts with this, since you guys heard us, I'm pretty sure it's the same group on the public hearing meeting. And then, of course, we'll have the opportunity, hopefully, with the board and trustee to present again. So my thought was to keep this brief, you know, late at night, that we'll just briefly talk about ourselves, maybe a little bit of information on, you know, our experience and such. And then we'll just get right into the site plans. This is a planning commission meeting. But let me know if you guys want more information. So I'll introduce myself and I'll have our, our group introduce themselves. And then we'll come back, I'll come back, talk about the site. So I'll introduce myself and I'll have our our group introduce themselves and then we'll come back. I'll come back, talk about the site and then turn it over to our design professionals to give their their input on how we arrived where we're at. So we're a we're entirely local Michigan group. Everybody who's part of our ownership group is on this call, so you're you're meeting with everyone right now. And we pride ourselves in all being from local and keeping our our work and our our profits in the state and in our communities. I personally, my background is on the business side. I've, you know, worked in several Fortune 500 companies, Johnson and Johnson, General Mills. Before making my way to Grand Rapids, Michigan to be the head of marketing for Founder's Brewing and I did that until about two years ago before I jumped off to start this venture. And then I'll let our other two ownership group, Rob McCuren, who is has the same last name as me, as you noticed, he's my cousin. And then Brian Kirschbaum, who lives there in Northfield. So Rob, you want to go first?
Yes, thanks for the intro and thanks to everyone on the on the committee for all the work to move this process forward where you know, I've spoken before and like Trent said, we don't want to take up a ton of your time and really, really focus on the site plan because we've I think stated our case pretty clearly about our organization, our Michigan roots, our local partnership. And we think we've got an ideal site there and a great plan to to renovate that and really bring a lot of of good retail business to that that particular area of the township and and we are also pretty clear about our focus being on the medical and wellness benefits of cannabis. And bringing that to our stores in a very kind of, we think somewhat unique fashion compared to some other some other organizations that are out there. That being said, we're vertically integrated, which is really important in this business to be successful currently. We're very close to opening our first grow operation in a processing lab and we have a few other sites that are in development, but Northfield would certainly be our our flagship location. I'm from Ann Arbor. We've got strong roots here. We have a lot of strong partnership. Particularly on the retail side through a relationship with Mission Management and our partner John Carlson. We have an outstanding local partner who's already operating a business in Northfield Township, Brian Kirschbaum, and I'll let him speak for himself. But bringing him into our organization would be a great way to to really, you know, tie our roots into the to the township and and we think, you know, create a first class operation at that at that site. So I'll stop there and but happy to answer any other specific questions the the committee might have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Rob and Trent. My name is Brian Kirschbaum. I live right here in Northfield Township, 1081 St. Andrew's Drive in Whitmore Lake. As Rob just said, I help run a small local business here in Northfield Township as well. My wife and I live here with two young kids and we love keeping things local around the community, supporting local communities as well. So very excited for the opportunity and look forward to going.
Okay, and John, you want to you want to introduce yourself real quick? John would be the future building owner if the permits awarded. Purchase agreement executes and John is the one to purchase that and would lease it back to us. So John?
Sorry Trent, I promoted him, but it didn't go through, so I just promoted him again. John. J O N, John. Hopefully we have the right person. Going to go ahead and unmute you, John, in case you're trying to find that button and can't find it.
Yep, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm transitioning over to my computer. But my name is John Carlson. I live kind of in North Scioto Township. Not far from the site. I've done real estate historic development since 1994. Originally from Traverse City, married a downstater after going to college and have been a lifetime or now since college, a resident of Scioto Township. And looking forward to being part of the team. I'm only on the real estate side. Current projects we have going right now is it's called the Thompson Block in Depot Town, Ypsilanti, Michigan. And this will be the next project we hope to be able to work on.
Great. Thank you, John. Okay, so just a real quick overview of the site before I let the design professionals take you take over and kind of explain how we approached the site. Like Paul said, it's on 50 East North Territorial, so it's right there on a nice little corner. We really liked the site for a couple of reasons. One is the abundance of parking, which we I think we mentioned on the last call, we think is even more important now in the era of a pandemic. Where carryout is aha and pickup is more important and than necessarily an interior retail space. We also think with the the amount of space there and where it's located, the traffic really won't be an issue. In terms of causing backups there. And then it's just a nice little corner. It's general commercial, so it's consistent with the zoning and the 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 usage desired there. And we think that area has is just apt for development in terms of what what that area could bring. You know, we got tractor supply right next to us. If we can get another commercial anchor there, we think it can really start to develop the area right there. And of course, it's well away from anything. Any schools, parks or anything, so it's kind of on its own thing there. Which I think gives a nice dichotomy compared to perhaps, you know, some of the other locations that are being proposed that are kind of clustered around the same area. So that's my little spiel. I'll turn it over to Brian Howard, who is our on our architect side and Brad Parlata, who is our engineering side. As Paul mentioned, we did a lot of work in the interim. Shoving a lot of work into a short amount of time. So those guys did a lot of the heavy lifting and I'll let Brian perhaps take over and go over our site.
Great. Thanks Trent. Brian Howard with HF Architecture located in Royal Oak, but worked with John Carlson on numerous projects the past 20 years. This project's very exciting. It's it's a building that is in dire need of a renovation. It's in dire need of an uplift. And and we feel that we took the building and really expanded on it. Two level buildings, a very unique building. And we really felt that creating two entities or two levels to this building was truly important, creating two levels of parking, a lower level and an upper level. Those two real retail spaces become very unique in their own right. We've connected both floors, interior. We've put an elevator in that will allow accessibility from each level. But also internally, the building becomes also independent of each other on both levels. Site wise, which I'll let Brad expand on this even more. We've tied both parkings together with a walkway. Currently, if you know the site, there's a road that connects the upper and lower levels that really is deteriorated. It it it's a road that you really cannot drive on, nor would I want to walk on it. We've also went a step further. And and John can attest to this. We we really truly did make a decision to take the Whitmore Lake access kind of off the table. And create more of an internal site where we could come off of North Territorial on the lower side. Access a new road up to the upper level. So what we've done is we've really tried to create a project within itself or on its own, within its own merit. And as everyone I'm sure knows the property. The road access and the parking lots, albeit gravel. Are not keeping with what engineering standards are. And I'm going to now send it over to Brad and let him talk about how his team was able to really create an engineering feat on a site that's very difficult to work with. Brad?
Yeah, thank you, Brian. Good evening. I think Brian pretty much captured what's going on in the existing conditions on this site. It's a dated site. The impervious surfaces that are out there are poorly distressed. Asphalt concrete drives in very poor shape. The aggregate base is is exposed in many areas, including on the main parking lot. We have a loop access coming off Whitmore Lake Road. So we we really had to get our survey out there to see what was going on and this site is difficult because it's mostly a slope site. It starts on a high level to the south and it slopes down towards North Territorial Road. So you may have a lot of accommodating area, but when we have something on a slope surface, you can't always maximize surface area as well as as well as you want to. So we really had to play with grades. We knew we had to get the traffic in from North Territorial Road. They had to make a decision to be able to go to the lower parking lot or the upper parking lot and we had to do that all while making a smooth, safe transition for the public to be able to do that. Kind of the grade of the road right now was very steep. Obviously, the width of the asphalt, the parking lot, especially the the road was was not in compliance with what it had to be. So the grading was very overwhelming aspect of this project. My designer, you know, four or five times of iterations trying to design that that intersection, if you will. Going to the lower and upper parking lot. And once we figured that out, once we applied the hard surfaces to that being the the asphalt road and parking lot, then we had to deal with drainage. Which, you know, all those same same exact challenges we had with the with the pavement, we now had with drainage too. It was very difficult to capture in conventional basins or whatnot, just because of grade and maybe some of those velocities. So the approach we took was we framed in the parking lot, the road to make that accommodating and then we, to the maximum extent possible, diverted stormwater and conveyed it in ditching, grassed waterways. As much in that grassed portion of the site that we could before we got it into catch basins and structures, which eventually go to an underground infiltration system, which, you know, was was challenging as it as it is. But the thing that we we like about this is the site manages stormwater significantly through grassed waterways and we minimize the amount of catch basins and pipe conveyance as possible. So with that, we also had some tree removals. We're planting new trees. Some of the trees needed that, whether it was in compliance or not. So yeah, we're, you know, kind of what we have framed together meets Brian's design intent and I and I just think it's dramatically changing the site to a better condition for the township.
So gentlemen, if we could, we could put a wrap on this, I'd like to move on. Would anyone like to finish up from the applicant?
Well, no, I think the design professionals captured it well. I think we wanted to focus this conversation on the technical aspects of the plan, so to be respectful of your time.
Thank you. Appreciate that. So with that we'll go to comments, questions from the commissioners regarding the conditional use. Anyone have questions or comments for the applicant or Mr. Lippens? Mr. Lippens, I I guess I need to view the rest of the commission.
I'm sorry Chair. You need to field the rest of the the commission?
I'm not able to view all the commissioners.
Oh, I see. I understand. Commissioners, if you do have a comment at this time, I can't see everybody, maybe just physically raise your hand if you'd like to speak and let me just check in. Ms. Infante? You have a comment since you're participating via audio?
Thank you. No, I don't. I enjoyed the presentation very much.
Thank you Commissioner. I'm not seeing Commissioner Dwyer, trustee Chick, Commissioner Zarzaki, Commissioner Kusano with their hands raised, so
Very good.
They don't have comments.
Thank you. I have them in. I have them on. I can view them now. Thank you. So if no one else has, I just have two quick questions. And applicant can clarify. Just for the record, I know the conditional use application, although it was filled out in May, indicates building addition and I, from what I'm seeing, I'm not seeing an addition, but for the record, can you can someone clarify if that's correct or not? That there will not be any addition to the
I can clarify that. This is Brian Howard. So there are two additions to the building, one on the lower level and one on the upper level. They're identical and mirror images of each other. And they're creating more of an entry, a sense of entry into the building. They're both single story structures and they're approximately 700 square feet addition per floor.
Thank you for the clarification. And my other question is to Mr. Lippens. Regarding your review, item A5. Recommending the applicant pursue an easement on the west side to Whitmore Lake Road. The OHM review does not recommend this. So why is this recommended to the applicant?
So I believe the OHM review and Marcus can also chime in on this. Just states that there's no easement. And not that he doesn't make a recommendation of wanting one or not wanting one. And I agree and observed consistent with what Mr. Howard said regarding their site design. That it is it's designed so that it can be accessed by the North Territorial Road. And so that's why I'm recommending a reciprocal easement because I know that access is there and it's been a part of the way the site has been accessed for both parcels. So there's parcels to the east that I think could benefit from that circulation system access as well. So I would say Chair that this is a soft recommendation. They do not need that access for us to approve. Approve it, but I'm recommending that they pursue it as part of just, you know, basically being a good neighbor, right? You know, we know if 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 it's beneficial to have, it's beneficial to have cross-site access. And what we want to do is enable the adjacent sites to also develop in a productive manner. So that's the basis for my recommendation, but I do know that I don't believe it's required. Or needed for access to this site.
I guess that's my point, Mr. Lippens. In in here in hearing the applicant's presentation. They didn't address it. They they felt that they didn't need it on on the site yet. Were were possibly making it a condition that they pursue an easement for for what reason I I don't understand is my point. Mr. McNamara from OHM doesn't have an issue with it. It sounds like the applicants applicants don't have an issue with with it. So my point right now tonight is to clarify for the applicant. Whether or not this is an item for them or not, and if it's not recommended and that the applicant is not didn't incorporate it into their drawings or their plans, then my point, I guess, right now is that they shouldn't have to be pursuing an easement if they don't deem it necessary.
So Chair, I appreciate the opportunity to clarify that and and if and I'll note that in in my recommendations, I'm not recommending that that be a condition of approval. That is a it's a soft recommendation. So I'd say it's good planning. And as part of being a good good neighbor, you know, if if it would help or them or even their neighbor to enter into an easement, we would encourage it. But not recommend it be required as part of your approval. Is that a good clarification?
Thank you. Yep. Anyone else? Any other commissioners on the conditional use? Seeing that I'll make a motion. The planning commission recommend the township board approve approve the conditional use subject to conditions on the mechanical review and or the planning commission review. For case JPC 200006. For case JPC two zero 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 six and defer the matter of precedence to the Township Board.
Support.
Or by Ms. Infante. Any questions, comments on that motion? Seeing that Mr. Zarzaki, can you please do a roll call vote?
Let's check.
Yes.
Mr. Kuznow.
Yes.
Mr. Dreyer.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn, Mr. Ms. Infante.
Yes.
Mr. Roman.
Yes.
Zarzaki, yes. Six approved, one abstaining.
Thank you. We will move to item ten D. I make a motion for discussion case JPC two zero 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 six to recommend approve, approve of conditions or deny the request of RTMC Enterprise fifty East North Territorial Road, Whitmore Lake. For a site plan approval to develop the existing structure into a recreational retail provisioning center. Recreational retail provisioning centers are permitted as conditional land use in the GC General Commercial District per Article fourteen. Section thirty-six dash three nine one of the zoning ordinance. Parcel numbers B zero two two zero three zero 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 three two and zone GC General Commercial District. With that, we will go to Mr. Lippens review than the OHM review by Mr. McNamara. Mr. Lippens.
Thank you, Chair.
Excuse me, Mr. Lippens. I need support on that. Supported by Ms. Chick. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed. Not opposed. Okay, Mr. Lippens.
Thank you, Chair. I I talked a little bit about some of the the issues I've noted in the site plan review. You know, just to revisit that access in this, my review of this as well, I said, we strongly encourage the applicant to pursue joint access agreement, but we find territorial access. To be sufficient for the proposed use. So. It is not not a condition of site plan approval either that that we. We think that access should be required. I I concur with the presentation of the applicant that they've done a very good job about dealing with access. And, you know, really making very interesting site work. I thought the presentation was. It was well presented by by Mr. Howard. So thank you for your comments. And the one thing that I I did mention in my. Presentation on the conditional use that I I probably should have reserved for this discussion. Is the note and the condition that I placed related to the prime ovations pool sign. It's certainly okay that they're not proposing signage right now. But because of that, we weren't able to review that sign as a criteria and. Now is definitely the appropriate time to make sure that sign is in compliance. So we have recommended that. As a condition, the requirement would be that the existing signs on the site be required to be removed or brought into compliance with the current ordinance. And by placing that condition on the site plan approval, it will allow us to. Make sure that that is completed if signs signs are pursued under a separate permit. I I think the other thing that I didn't discuss was a little bit about the natural features review. The applicant did present on the stormwater and all the things they did to make sure that the site could process the stormwater. I did have comments in my letter about the landscaping and natural features. You know, I really like the landscaping plan. So well done. I think they did a good job of preparing it and making it clear is what they what they wanted to do. They clearly showed the the trees that are being removed. Their plan to replace the trees. They are replacing it at higher than one one hundred percent caliper. And, you know, based on the stormwater improvements and pavement improvements. I think that the trees they're recommending to propose are justified and the. The mitigation proposed is. Consistent with the intent of the ordinance. So I think that covers the high points, but I wanted to mention that as well in case those questions come up.
Thank you, Mr. Lippens. We'll go to Mr. McNamara.
Evening again. So I think the applicant did do a good job explaining the site. It does have some challenges with grading, but I think it did a good job of addressing those. So really, the only things that we have outstanding, again. Are the permit agencies to make sure they're aware. Washington County Road Commission will review and approve the curb cut improvements, the geometry of that. The pavement cross-section, et cetera, associated with the work in the right of way. And really concurrently with that, they'll need to. Have review and approval from Washington County Water Resources. Their outlet, their proposed outlet for stormwater is to the North Territorial Right Of Way. So that will require. Both the Road Commission and the Drain Commission. Then the only other, I guess, maybe clarification on the site plan that that we had. If the. If they're not proposing to pursue the cross-access agreement at this time. I think it would make sense to, if possible. Get maybe a ten-foot or so grading easement from the neighboring property so they can. Really do a good job with the the work along the west west property line. So. Without that grading permit, they would have to saw cut that gravel slash asphalt that's there. And it'd be a little bit of an awkward transition. And if that neighbor parcel to the west ever did develop, they would need to go, you know, they wouldn't presumably wouldn't be allowed. Both curb cuts that they have now, those would need to be. Reduced to one. So the location of that cross-access. So if if all that stuff's unknown at this time and they're not pursuing it, just so that they can complete their site improvements. It suggests, again, it's not, it's not absolutely necessary, but it'd be, it would make everybody's, it'd make the work easier to complete. And that's all that we have.
Thank you, Mr. McNamara. Just for the record, we did receive review from the Northfield Fire Department with no issues. At this point, we'll go to commissioners with comments, questions regarding the site plan. Anyone? Ms. Infante, we'll go to her in case she does have any.
Thank you. No, I think it's a great plan.
Thank you. Anyone? I'm not seeing any, but so of course I have a couple. So Mr. Lippens, on the. On the site plan review, comment number three. It's talking about pedestrian circulation. I think you have a typo or something needs to be removed. It says the existing building is located on west side of Main Street. Main Street provides public sidewalks only on the east side of the right of way. Obviously not where we're talking about.
You are correct. The first sentence of that is is a typo and should be removed.
Thank you. I think we covered the access off of Whitmore Lake Road. And. In addition to your comments, Mr. Lippens, of number nine on signage. And I just want to, I want to clarify this, although I I know I'd like to get it on record. Where is the prime ovation sign that is referred to? And perhaps the applicant would like to address either one.
So it's it's noted on the site plan. It's west of the driveway access. On the existing site plan and then it is, you know, maintained on the proposed site plan with no note that states to be removed. Admittedly, I haven't driven by the site in a while, so but. I, to my knowledge, it's still there and it's certainly still there by looking at the aerial reviews, so.
Thank you. So my other, the other issue I have, which although I know administratively you can address. The sign that were that I referred to there, the the one of. Prime ovations. But I have another issue with signs on this particular site. And it happens to be an abandoned and probably non-conforming billboard sign. At US twenty-three and territorial road interchange beyond the southwest. Corner. And I don't know if this property does go that far. I didn't get that far to look into that. Being it was a late addition for today's packet, but it happens to be. An arrow sign. It's it's vacated. It's not in good shape at all. And in the past, it was used for this, for businesses at this address. So. My comment or condition that I would like to to make, and I'd like to hear from the applicant regarding this, if they know anything about it or. Perhaps your opinion, Mr. Lippens, but I think this needs to be removed.
Chair, I think that's a really good catch. So one of the things that we haven't discussed. Particularly about this site is that there is. You know, basically, a. A small. Access strip that then connects to a larger parcel that is adjacent to the highway. And we don't don't have information on that, but basically it's unimproved. So no improvements on that site are. Are being proposed as part of this proposal or being approved. But that being said, because of that, we didn't have this sign noted on the site plans as well. But I I concur. This would fall under the recommendation I made for an existing site that we would require to be removed. As part of site plan approval. And, you know, it's also visible. You know, from looking at the a Google Street View. From the US twenty-three ramps. So I certainly think we could hear from the applicant on it if you would like, Chair.
Yeah, I I would like to clarify with them, just so that they're aware and we get it on record as to expectations. Applicant? Anyone? I I know there's several of you. I don't know who would like to address it.
Probably John. John?
Yeah, I'm wondering if we could address those separately. Am I muted or can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Can you hear? You can hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. So the ovation signage. That is directly to the west of the drive. It is a unique sign. I I know I've done work in townships and in downtowns and. This was a unique and special factor to this retail site of signage. We definitely think it needs to be. Addressed and fixed up. But we really like the sign and wondering if we could work with the local sign company to propose the changes. I guess I wanted to follow up on on that being extremely important, but we also realize that it's not under current review. And then with the billboard. It obviously is a unique and I I guess I've used that word twice here. For this location and was important when we. Looked at it. It was a little confusing. And so we're wondering if we can take some time to examine. That billboard more and come back. To you, but we don't want to slow up any process that we have now. So. Like the possible. Easement prescriptive or the adverse easement we might have off of Whitmore Lake on that. Additional drive, we did not want to complicate. The process. So we tried to look at a site that was internal and had access right off Northfield. So. Not understanding quite on the process of how this would work, but we we do like both signs, but. Understand, I guess, both your points. So I'm not sure how we would address that without slowing down this process.
I'll let Mr. Lippens respond.
Thank you, Chair. So. I would just describe, you know, the issue here is that both signs are required to conform with the current ordinance. And as part of this conditional use review process, that might mean that they would have to be removed. And you would have to propose. A new sign in their place, you know, if permitted to have a sign in its place. But even since you didn't provide us with any specs or existing. Information on how those signs are built, we can't even review them to see. If they're currently complying with the ordinance. I suspect that they're not. But they may be. And if they were, I would certainly look favorably on your request to keep them. You know, and even with respect to the sign the chair brought up, since that part of your parcel wasn't even included in in. The detail of the existing conditions analysis, we, I like, I missed it in the review. I know that sign. Well, from driving by it and I. I would make the recommendation, as I stated in my letter, that both signs be required to be removed. As part of a planning commission approval. Or brought into conformance on a separate application. So I think you have two choices, you know, one, you can ask Planning Commission to table. And then you can provide us with, you know, full details on the specs of those signs so that we can review them as part of this application. Or you can say, actually, our preference is to remove them or, you know. Recognize that if they don't conform to the current ordinance, we'll remove them in the future when we apply for a site plan. But essentially, what I want to tell you is that. You would not qualify for a copy change. And, you know, maintaining a non-conforming sign. Because of the application you're doing now, my recommendation is to remove them now and bring them into conformance. So I'm trying to explain that. Of course, I I agree with you. They're both unique signs, but they may not conform with the science standards and. The purpose of the science standards is to. You know, make sure that signing is consistent. Attractive. And, you know, conforming with the types of things other businesses have to do in the township.
So are they? So with this, they're not, there's no ability to have them grandfathered in. Because of this process, meaning they they have to be in conformance. Or can they be reviewed later? Meaning, could could. Could this be a separate matter that is reviewed on a signage basis only? And if and if an agreement wasn't made, I guess what I'm trying to say is that we would have to take them down, but we would like. The ability to review for either they're conforming. Or if they're grandfathered in, you're saying that that wouldn't matter?
Yes.
Meaning we've done, we, okay, I'm sorry.
Mr. Lippens can respond and then perhaps I can after.
Yeah, I'm I'm saying my recommendation would be for as part of planning commission's approval for them require to have a condition that requires those signs to be removed. If they are not conforming with the code. And then if so, you're eligible to submit a sign permit essentially for a conforming sign after this process. But during the planning commission review. You would, to have planning commission consider those signs, you would have to provide those details as part of this application. So that planning commission can review the actual details on those signs, which we do not have at this time. So I think my recommendation would be to have them removed. Or brought into compliance, as I stated, but to include. The billboard along with the prime ovation sign. Alternatively, if you want planning to make commission to. Review those two signs as part of this application. You need to go, you'll need to go back, basically ask planning commission to table. And then go back and develop full detailed sets of those signs and submit them as part of your application. And, you know, we'll we'll review the them at that time. So. But you kind of have to decide which which approach would be better for you. And I I hope that's helpful, Chair, and I know you wanted to make. But you kind of have to decide which which approach would be better for you, and I I hope that's helpful, Chair, and I know you wanted to make a comment as well.
No, thank you for the clarification, but I'd like to help the applicant even more. Chances are, we're going, the next thing we're going to is to table the site plan, so. Uh, the good, the good news is you don't have to make a decision tonight. But uh, I I suggest following the recommendation that's on the site plan review, that's all I have to say. So I don't want to belabor the the point with the signs or sit and talk about that any much longer. Is there any other comments, questions, uh, on the site plan from any other commissioners? Um, Miss Ms. Infante, none? Just verifying.
None, thank you.
Thank you, in that case, I make motion for the planning commission to table the site plan recommendation until. The applicant receives conditional use approval with conditions from the township board. For case JPC two zero 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 six.
Or.
Or by Ms. Chick, any questions, comments on that motion? Seeing none, Mr. Zarzaki, please do a roll call vote.
Ms. Chick?
Yes.
Mr. Kuznow? Mr. Dreyer?
Yes.
Ms. Infante?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Zarzaki, yes, six approve, one abstain.
Thank you, uh, thank you, gentlemen, from. Uh, our TMC enterprise, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Welcome. With that, we will move on to item ten E. I make motion, we open for discussion case JPC two zero 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 eight. Recommend to approve, approve of conditions or deny the request of Michigan Pure Green LLC fifty-two Barker Whitmore Lake. For a conditional use to develop the existing structure into a recreational retail. And provisioning center, recreational retail and provisioning centers are permitted as a conditional land use. In the WLDD district per article twelve, section thirty-six dash three four zero of the zoning ordinance. The parcel number is B zero two zero five two five three zero zero seven in zone WLDD Whitmore Lake Downtown District, is there support?
Support.
Or by Mr. Zarzaki, any uh, questions, comments, if there are none. Uh, all in favor indicate by saying aye, aye.
Aye.
Posed. None, uh, with that, we will go to. Um, Mr. Lippens review first, and then. Go to the applicant or their representative for a ten minute presentation.
Thank you, Chair, uh, I'm gonna promote uh, Rob and Joslyn, I see are here, I'm gonna promote both of them to panelist. Um. And I think I accidentally uh, made Brad um. An attendee, so Brad, I'm I'm sending you back into the meeting, apologize for that, uh, I think I had another Brad, sorry, Brad. Um, uh, and then I've got uh, someone named Kathy Dunbar in the audience, Joslyn or Rob, are are they part of your team?
Yes, that's correct, Paul, Kathy is part of our team.
I'm gonna promote Kathy, is there anyone else here? Joslyn with your team?
There is one more member of our team, Somer is here also.
All right, let me look for Somer.
Unless he's with Rob, Rob, is he with you?
Yes, Somer and I are sharing a laptop.
Okay, great.
Perfect.
Um, all right, let me go to. My packet, um. So uh, Michigan Pure Green, um, is uh. Looking for the address, we're all familiar with. What's that?
Fifty-two Barker?
Yes, fifty-two Barker, thank you, Joslyn, um, and um. It's on the north side of of Barker, um, the site development is proposing landscaping improvements. Um. Uh, improvements to the the facade and access um, to the the front of the site. Um. Uh, additionally, um, the applicant can probably speak to this, uh, but they have provided a a letter, which I will include in. Upcoming packet, um, stating a couple of things they would like to potentially include in a a development agreement. As part of uh, their their um. Um. Package, um. And I guess I'll I'll let uh, the applicant speak to those, um, those items, but I I did. Can confirm that they provided a letter uh, to us today, and and I'll provide that, the items they discuss in their presentation. Um, in a in a future packet, um, for planning commissioner and the in the public to see the details of that. That letter uh, that we received, um, we are recommending approval of the conditional use, similarly noting. Um, that uh, findings relating to um. How the applicant has addressed the marijuana facility, local development agreement and. Supplemental scoring criteria uh, be made as part of the conditional use review of the site. Um, either by planning commission or deferred to. Uh, the board as part of your recommendation to uh, to the board on on the application. Um. I think that covers most of the details I wanted to mention on the uh, site plan, um. Or pardon me, on the conditional use, um, but I know the applicant would like to speak as well, so. I will turn it over to their team, Joslyn, are you taking the lead on your presentation?
Yeah, well, to the extent that I'm going first, Paul, yes, um, uh, our presentation is going to consist of three different speakers. After me, you'll hear from the property owner, Somer, next, um, you'll hear from Rob Pizzielli, he's the. Member and owner of the licensee, um, he has significant construction and legal and cannabis. And compliance, education and training, and Rob will explain our development plan, and then also. Michigan Pure Green's extensive Michigan cannabis experience, um, the third speaker is Ms. Kathy Dunbar, she's our nonprofit coordinator. And her portion of the presentation this evening will speak to the benefits that our plan. Brings to this community and any community where we put roots down, um. What you're going to hear from Somer, from Rob and from Kathy, is that Michigan Pure Green has the most Michigan experience in retail cannabis. Of the applicants you have seen, we have the most vested interest in this township and in the state of Michigan. And we have a plan for community development that isn't self-centered, but it is completely community centered. So from that, I will turn it over to Somer to tell you a little bit more about the commitment that we have to the community.
Hi, everyone, um, now I'm speaking tonight as being part of the new Michigan uh, Pure Green Adventure. I don't know if you guys can see me or not, I don't see myself in the, no, okay, that's okay. Um, you know, since Northfield opted in for the marijuana dispensaries, you know, I was approached by numerous. Dispensaries that were interested in my current location, you know, after taking everything into consideration, I realized that Michigan Pure Green was. Best fit, especially with all their experience and local background. You know, part of that, though, is I didn't want to leave Whitmore, but I'm glad that if we get approved for a dispensary, that I'd be able to continue working here in town. As part of the Michigan Pure Green team. Um, as part of our development agreement, you know, which we did forward to Paul earlier, you know, we we came up with some great ideas to help with the community. And assist in the master plan, I'm just gonna mention them right now, we can get into more detail later. But one of them would be to help in the development of creating a beach or fishing pier on the North Village waterfront. Uh, second would be improvements to the downtown Main Street or Barker Road streetscape, which. You know, would include something like uh, gas lighting, lighting down the sidewalks. You know, or maybe even something with seventy-five Barker, putting up a sign, something to that extent. But I think the most important one is that we're willing to assist in a new business venture in the downtown area. Uh, being active on the local Facebook pages, it informed me that uh, the community would like to see something new in town. And it seems that a bakery is in demand, you know, I remember a local person commenting that they would love to open a bakery in town. So if you're hearing this, or if someone listening knows her, please have her contact me on Facebook or come see me at Porky's. Uh, you know, our goal here is to help a local person start a new business in town. And after doing business here for so many years, I can definitely appreciate the importance of supporting the community. You know, I did hear other applicants claim how they fell in love with Whitmore Lake as soon as they saw it. You know, I sometimes I wonder if they would still love it and open a new business in town if they didn't get approved for a dispensary. You know, I came here almost fifteen years ago, and no, I did not love Whitmore at the time, but what I can tell you now is that. I love it more than anything right now, and it's actually home to me, you know, I've made so many friends here over the years that many are like family to me. You know, and we love it here so much that my partners and I purchased the Driftwood Marina, the lake house next door, and we still have some other. New business ideas as well, you know, I spend a lot of time at the lake house, out on the lake with my family. You know, so what I'm trying to say is that I'm a local who really truly loves it here, not some outsider wanting to come into this town only because. We opted in for the dispensaries, so uh, thank you for your time. So uh, Rob will be speaking next.
Yes, I'm Rob Pizzielli, thank you. Planning Commission for allowing us this opportunity to uh, speak to you tonight, and I will. Uh, be as brief as I can, I've got three separate areas that I'm going to touch upon, um. And the improvements that we're gonna make to this uh, property, the uh, proposed future development agreement with the township. And our uh, extensive Michigan cannabis experience, um, so first off with uh. The improvements being made to the site at fifty-two Barker, it's a comprehensive uh, plan to improve. That site and building, um, exterior, interior, um, the exterior, we're gonna make improvements to the. The sidewalk out front, along with the uh, improvements to the parking lot. Um, and adding uh, landscaping um, at the building and and uh, at the entrance to the site. Um, the exterior is gonna change significantly, we are going to remove the existing roof. Uh, of the building and raise the the roof, uh, which would. Change the facade and appearance from of the building from the street, enhancing uh, that appearance. And making it more desirable uh, in the community, uh. On the interior. Well, let me first address that all of the building materials and and changes that would be made to the mechanicals. Including the HVC plumbing and electrical would be using. Energy efficient methods and fixtures. Meeting all of the Michigan code requirements. The finishes on the interior would be of all the highest grade and create a more. Appealing uh, customer experience, and so the floor plan of the interior. In conjunction with those fixtures is is going to provide a more efficient customer uh, experience. By the flow, the way they enter through the reception area into the retail space, and then being able to exit the uh, the facility. Um, and we have prided ourselves as an organization to um. Efficiently. Uh, see, you know, provide for the needs of our customers, um, and. Getting them in and out as quickly as possible, because we know that that. We're we're there to help them, but we are also there to make sure that they get. Get the medicine and product that they're looking for in a timely manner, um. So. There also the site is, there's no additional um, increases or impact on public services with the um, changes that we're making. Um. We. So, uh, we could possibly use, so the parking situation, we realize that there there's some parking issues. Um, that the commission may have, and we may be able to dedicate a portion of the site to uh, the public parking system in the township. And if there's a need, we can use the the Marina that that Somer um, also owns as as part of that overflow. Um, and I'd like to now speak to the community, community development strategies that Somer had mentioned. Um, first, the uh, the street case, streetscape improvements in the parking, um. You know, we we would, we've reviewed the township's master plan or master strategies. Um, and we want to be part of that to create a flourishing downtown district. Um, and one of the ways that we see that, you know, with improving foot traffic is to be able to provide some uh. Landscaping enhancements or street lighting on Main Street that people would feel, uh, not that they don't at the moment, but. Maybe more secure in traveling those areas because they'd be well lit from uh, from the. Streetlights and, you know, the the type of fixture, Somer mentioned the gas light, I think it wouldn't be actually a gas. Powered fixture, but it may represent or or look like an old gas light, or whatever the fixture that the township would. Like to see, um. There would also be, uh, we, along with the streetscape, the improvements that we're looking at would be the seventy-five Barker. Um, which is, from my understanding, public parking, um, we, what we would propose is. Um, adding some signage that would provide. Uh, notice to people entering the township and uh, the community that uh, that parking is available for the community. Um, along with some landscape to enhance the entrance in that area, um. And also addressing some crosswalks, um, maybe adjacent to the seventy-five Barker. Um, to cross the street, so pedestrians would feel more uh, secure or safe crossing the street, and also. At the intersection of Barker and Main Street, um. The second. Part of our um, development agreement is Somer mentioned would be to. Provide. Some, uh, well, assistance to. Community members in developing a secondary business, non-cannabis related into in. In the community, um, and like. Somer had mentioned a bakery style or type cafe, and with our extensive business. These are uh, background, um, not only in cannabis, but in other areas, and I'll get into that in a moment. Um, would help provide financial and business support for that business. Um, make sure that it can sustain itself and be a a active and. A promising part of of the community, uh, the third part would be the waterfront on the North Village area, adding a. A fishing pier, um, so that the community, members of the community would be able to enjoy the lake and go out and fish and. Enjoy the nature and beauty of Michigan and Whitmore Lake and Northfield Township, um. Now I would like to um, talk about our experience, so just a little bit of background on myself. Um, I'm a practicing Michigan attorney, um, graduated from U of M, received my law degree from MSU. Um, worked in large firm here in Metro Detroit, now I have my own firm, um, also as general counsel to a local. Pizza company, um, my practice is centered around business formation, merger and acquisition. Uh, and in the cannabis industry, um, I also have extensive experience in the construction industry. On both residential and commercial, on the commercial side, I've built out over five thousand square feet of commercial space. Um, which I have found helpful in our cannabis locations, um, with those build outs and renovations. And have worked as a somewhat of a project manager on some of those locations. And I've worked as somewhat of a project manager on some of those locations. Um, but we are a Michigan-only cannabis company, based and focused only in the Michigan market. We have no desire to go outside the state. We, we have family here and all of our team members are from Michigan. And going through, you know, being involved in this industry, we realized that there are many areas where you need to have expertise. And so with that understanding, we created an executive team that basically consists of three sub-teams. Um, we have a legal part of the team. We have a call it an executive, uh, kind of like operational team and then a medical advisory team. So all of our our legal team, which I'm a part of, are solely cannabis attorneys, except for we practice primarily in the cannabis space. Um, we have since two thousand sixteen, before there was any licensing in the state, and there was only a caregiver model. Um, we have been involved in this industry by not only speaking to different municipalities, when, you know, when the municipalities were first considering opting in, helping with writing ordinances. Um, but we have extensive experience with the MRA. And we have built and cultivated the relationships with the MRA. That's all we do on our legal team is we do cannabis and we do cannabis in Michigan.
Mr. Pizzielli, Pizzielli, uh, I, excuse me for interrupting, but you need to wrap your presentation up on the interest of time.
Okay, no problem. Um, the operational team, we have extensive experience in in the retail business area. We have members who come from the retail cellular industry, um, retail convenience stores, food service and government contracting who, uh, involved in the inventory and compliance part of our operation. Um, the medical team, we have doctors, social workers and registered nurses that advise the our operation. And in aggregate, we have an experience in the cannabis industry of over ninety years. Um, Michigan Pure Green has applications for licensees in Big Rapids Portage. And our executive team is involved in operating locations in Battle Creek, Leoni, which is in Jackson, Camden, Lansing and Clare. Um, and that's all I have, so.
Thank you.
Time.
Thank you very much. Okay, with that, we will, um, go to any.
I apologize, I'm I'm interrupting and I certainly apologize, Mr. Roman. I had one more member of my team to speak if I could have.
Um, I'm sorry, Ms. Monahan.
Yes, yes, sir.
Unfortunately, in all fairness to all the applicants.
Fair enough. No, fair enough. Thank you.
You've exceeded your time slot and I would just like to be fair to all.
Absolutely. I had to offer for my client, but I understand. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So with that, we're going to go to commissioners, questions, comments regarding the conditional use. Any commissioners? Ms. Infante?
No, thank you very much. Thanks for asking.
Okay, uh, then I have just two, two, um, small items. Uh, Mr. Lippens, of course, again, on the language, the conditional use review, add retail to the recreational in the first paragraph and eight and, uh, A six on page four, adult use also needs to change. So as I said, uh, we're going to touch upon that as we come across those.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Um, to the applicant, I have just one question. And anyone, any one of you who would like to answer. An A four of the review indicates the site development plan does not address the downtown plan. Can you expound on why this was not the case in the given timeframe?
I can respond to that. I think, um, I guess why it wasn't in the initial is in part due to our collective desire to can, to understand what was happening in the community around these cannabis applications. And so frankly, um, Chair, we took advantage of listening to these, these conversations and listening to the types of questions that the community, the community public members and then members of this commission asked and the kinds of conversations that were had. And we drew on Somer's experience. And then when we realized, um, that we had some pretty good ideas to offer, we thought at that time we would present them. We wanted to take a very careful approach to it as opposed to an approach that sort of just improved, um, our, our corner of the universe um, in a way that was consistent with the master plan. We really did want a community-centered proposal that would obviously seem as though we were reaching beyond ourselves and not just doing something that benefited us first and the community second. And so it, we wanted to be very circumspect with that, and that's what we did.
Thank you, Ms. Monahan. Uh, Mr. Lippens, can you clarify the second to the last paragraph on your recommendation regarding, um, condition number three? I, I, I believe it's a typo, but I just want to clarify. I think you're referring four through six as you were on all the other applications, um, unless there's an issue with number three that the commission needs to know about.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Um, you are correct. That should say four through three, or sorry, four through six. Um, and actually, this is one point I wanted to hit on before Planning Commission made it, uh, any motions on this as well. So this is one of four sites uh, that are currently tied with an MFBLDA score of six and a supplemental scoring evaluation of nineteen. Um, so we're recommending three findings stating why they did the best job of addressing merit-based, uh, scoring criteria. If, um, if the planning commission or if you defer that to the board, uh, we would ask the board to make those findings. Uh, and then additionally, um, this is one of three sites in the downtown, uh, that are within one thousand feet of each other. Uh, so we're recommending at least one additional finding related to why, uh, this application, uh, did the best job of addressing merit-based scoring criteria. If, uh, indeed, uh, a planning commissioner or board member wants to make a finding uh, of precedence with regards to the Nature's Cure, um, or Michigan Pure Green proposal as well. So, uh, we are recommending that findings be, uh, be made in support of a conditional use application, uh, should, um, a recommendation to be approved, uh, to approve this site. Uh, further, we've attached that other, um, recommendation that we have that, that if, uh, the board chooses to, um, approve, uh, other sites and there are no remaining permits at the time, uh, when considering this application, uh, that action on this be tabled as opposed to be denied, uh, which would allow us to work with the applicant to see if there are potential other uses or, um, uh, steps to take, uh, to help them, uh, you know, find a productive use for their site. You know, we recognize that a lot of work has been done by this applicant and all applicants, um, to consider redevelopment. And, um, so rather than deny, we would like the opportunity to work with them. So that's part of our recommendation as well.
Uh, thank you. With that, Mr. Lippens, I make a motion of Planning Commission to recommend the township board approve the conditional use subject to conditions on the McKenna review and/or the Planning Commission review for case JPC two zero 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 eight and defer the matter of precedence to the township board.
Support.
Support by Ms. Infante.
Yes.
Any questions, comments on that? Seeing none, we'll go real call vote, Mr. Zarzaki.
Ms. Chick?
Yes.
Mr. Kuznow?
Yes.
Mr. Dreyer?
Yes.
Ms. Infante?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Zarzaki, yes. Six approve, one abstain.
Thank you, Mr. Zarzaki. Uh, we'll go to case, uh, ten F. I make a motion, uh, open for discussion, case JPC two zero 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 eight. Recommend to approve, approve with conditions or deny the request of Michigan Pure Green LLC fifty-two Barker Whitmore Lake for site plan approval to develop the existing structure into recreational retail provisioning center. Recreational retail provisioning centers are permitted as a conditional land use in the WLDD District. As per Article twelve, section thirty-six dash three four zero of the zoning ordinance, the parcel number is B zero two zero five two five three zero zero seven and zone WLDD Whitmore Lake Downtown District. Do I have support?
Support.
Or by Ms. Chick, any questions, comments on that? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? None opposed. Uh, with that, we will go to, uh, Mr. Lippens' site plan review, followed by the OHM review by Mr. McNamara and Mr. Lippens.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Um, noted in our letter that, um, we are recommending approval of the site plan, um, with the condition that, uh, the board does approve a conditional use. And, uh, if if they're, do not receive a conditional use, um, uh, we'd recommend the applicant, uh, work with us to find, uh, another, uh, use for that site, that would support the types of site improvements that are proposed. You know, I I mentioned that, um, there is additional landscaping proposed on the site, uh, which will be a nice addition. And, um, as well as exterior renovation, building, um, site lighting. And, uh, you know, I have no, it's it's a small site, so I don't have, uh, any issues, um, particularly that are popping out right now. Uh, but certainly if there are questions about the site, I'm I'm happy to address them. And, um, I know you want to hear from Marcus as well.
Thank you, uh, Mr. McNamara.
Again, um, I'll start off, I apologize. It looks like the letter that made it in the review letter that made it into the packet. Our review letter was the original letter. We did issue a revised letter following their August fifth, so middle revised plans. I didn't have much, so I'll just, I'll just read through. Um, generally, the, they, they took the comments from the original plan and addressed them all, uh, our original letter and addressed them all. Some of the good things, you know, the, the site pavement is, um, in pretty bad shape, so they are proposing to repair really all of it. Uh, and to curb to define the paving limits and they're, um, I'll mention they're improving with the landscaping, um, around the sign in the front of the site to define it a little better. Right now, the signs kind of just. So those are good things. Uh, the only comments we had, uh, certifications that we were looking for, the, the site plan calls for removal of the existing building mechanicals, which are on the west side of the building. Um, and I didn't see, unless I missed it, where those are supposed to be relocated, if they'll be rooftop or or where, or somewhere else on the site, because it's, they're showing on the removal plan, but not on the post-plan. Um, and in addition to that, the dumpster location is proposed to be screened by our provider, so I'm not sure how access for. And let me just make sure I think. Those are the two things that we would ask to be clarified. Um, and then the final comment, uh, uh, similar to the other sites, again, they're, they are doing work in the right way, so that is ultimately subject to be an approval.
So, Mr. McNamara, just to clarify, you do have conditions on the site plan of your most recent review.
Yes, those would be Washnaw County approval and clarification of the dumpster access and building mechanicals.
Okay, not, not only the access, Mr. Lippens, uh, concerned with the surround on the dumpster as to the ordinance? Can you speak on that?
Um, did you say the surround?
I'm going off what Mr. McNamara described.
Yeah, so, um, I think this is something Marcus noted that that I didn't cover with regards to the waste, but waste removal. Uh, but essentially it's screened, but unclear from a circulation perspective as how, how the trash will be picked up. Uh, correct, Marcus?
That's correct, and I, I didn't review the dumpster enclosure details to see if that met ordinance. I think that's what Larry may have been asking about as well.
Um, I, I don't think I have notes on the enclosure, uh, either in my ordinance, or in my letter. Um.
That's, that's why I'm asking, Mr. Lippens. I, and obviously, we're going off of just what Mr. McNamara reported to us because our re, our, uh, review is not the current one. So if it's missing in yours and Mr. McNamara has issue, I'd hope that you would put a part of your review also.
Yeah, I, I would say, um, if indeed the, the motion tonight, uh, is to table as, as other motions have been made, um, take another look at the waste receptacle and access, uh, seems, seems warranted.
Thank you. Uh, any other commissioners have questions, comments regarding the site plan?
None, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Infante. I don't see any. Therefore, I make motion, the planning commission to table the site plan recommendation until the applicant receives conditional use of approval with conditions from the township board for case JPC two zero 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 eight. Is there support?
Support.
Or by Ms. Infante, any questions, comments on that? Seeing none, we'll go to real call vote, Mr. Zarzaki.
Ms. Chick?
Yes.
Mr. Kuznow?
Yes.
Mr. Dreyer?
Yes.
Mr. Quinto? Excuse me.
He does not part of it.
I'm abstaining, sir.
Correct.
Uh, Ms. Infante?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Zarzaki, yes. Six approve, one abstain.
Thank you, and, uh, thank you, representatives of, uh, Pure, Michigan Pure Green.
Thank you very much.
Can I just make a quick comment? I just thought about it. Um, um, for the Michigan Pure Green people, um, made reference to, um, seventy-five Barker and and possibly, if I understood it correctly, uh, improving the entry to seventy-five Barker, that property has now been sold and we're in the process of closing and will have a closing date soon. So if they are going to, I don't know that they can do anything on that side of the road, but, um, it was a nice gesture. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, with that, I would like to take a, uh, ten-minute break. I make a motion to ten-minute recess.
Totally support.
Or by Ms. Infante, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, I have it. Uh, we'll reconvene at nine forty stubborn. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Chair, it does look like we've got the commissioners back here.
We'll give Mr. Kuzno a few seconds to reappear.
I'm here.
Thank you, Ms. Infante. It appears we're all here now, correct? Okay, we were, we are going to unfinished business now. And Mr. Lippens, I, I did hear your comment early in the meeting, but I would just like to say in all fairness to all the applicants, I, I do not feel the commission should further discuss details of the unfinished business cases. Okay, of the unfinished business cases. We should base everything off of the last week's discussion. And that's just all in fairness, we did a one time on them and as the applicants tonight, we did a one time on them also. You, you agree with that, Mr. Lippens?
Um, I think it's the, the preference of the chair, and I would agree that we did have a conversation. Actually, I'm seeing Mariah is actually an attendees and not in our panel, so I'm going to promote Mariah to panelist in case you'd like to also address that question to the township attorney. Mariah, I did just promote you to panelist and apologize, I didn't do that earlier. I thought that I had. But you've been here, so that's good. And then I'll also note, I know we have representatives from all of the old business here. In case you do have questions, I do know they are here. So Mariah, the question asked by the chair just was, since we've had a discussion, the same discussion on these applicants essentially last time, the chair, to restate Mr. Roman, when you've asked, I think you're just saying, would it be fair for you to proceed to make a motion on these cases?
That's, that's correct. That's, that's my feeling as chair, but if you want to, if you want to verify with Ms. Fink, that's fine.
I, I agree. I agree with Mr. Roman. The, the applicants had their time last week. These applicants had their time this week. I think to give the previous applicants more time might, might cause some issues. So I, I think that that's a reasonable way to proceed.
Thank you, Ms. Fink. Appreciate it. Okay, with that, I will make motion eight, nine A for the planning commission to recommend the township board approve the conditional use subject to conditions on the McKenna review and/or the planning commission review for case JPC two zero 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 two and defer the matter of precedence to the township board.
Support.
Ms. Chick supported. Any questions, comments on that motion? Seeing none, Mr. Zarzaki, please do roll call vote.
Yes. Ms. Chick?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzno?
Yes.
Mr. Dryer?
Yes.
Ms. Infante?
Yes.
Larry Roman?
Yes.
Roman? And Zarzaki, yes. So it's six, one abstaining for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Zarzaki. Nine B, I make motion for the planning commission to table the site plan recommendation until the applicant receives conditional use with conditions from the township board for case JPC two zero 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 two. Is there support?
Support.
Supported by Mr. Zarzaki. Any questions, comments on that motion? Mr. Kuzno?
So, just to understand, we're recommending that this site plan is, is being tabled for us to have further review if and when a conditional use has been approved by the board. Is this correct?
Correct.
Thank you, yes.
Excuse me, any other questions, comments?
Thank you for that clarification, Mr. Kuzno.
You're welcome.
Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so with that, we'll go to real call vote, Mr. Zarzaki.
Ms. Chick?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzno?
Yes.
Mr. Dryer?
Yes.
Ms. Infante?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Zarzaki, yes. So again, six, yes, one abstaining.
Thank you. Item nine C, I make a motion for planning commission to recommend the township board approve the conditional, conditional use subject to conditions on the McKenna review and/or the planning commission review for case JPC two zero 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 five and defer the matter of precedence to the township board.
Support.
Or by Ms. Infante, any questions, comments on that motion? Seeing none, we'll do roll call vote, Mr. Zarzaki.
Ms. Chick?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzno?
Yes.
Mr. Dryer?
Yes.
Ms. Infante?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Zarzaki? Yes. Approved, six, one abstaining.
Thank you. Item nine D, motion for planning commission to table the site plan recommendation until the applicant conditional use approval with conditions from the township board for case JPC two zero 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 five. There's support? Supported by Ms. Chick. Any questions, comments on that motion? Seeing none, we'll do roll call vote, Mr. Zarzaki.
Ms. Chick?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzno?
Yes.
Mr. Dryer?
Yes.
Ms. Infante?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Zarzaki, yes. Six, one approved.
Thank you. Item nine E, I make a motion for planning commission to recommend the township board approve the conditional use subject to the conditions on the McKenna review and/or the planning commission review for case JPC two zero 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 seven and defer the matter of precedence to the township board.
Support.
Or by Ms. Chick, any questions on that motion? Seeing none, Mr. Zarzaki, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Chick?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzno?
Yes.
Mr. Dryer?
Yes.
Ms. Infante?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Zarzaki, yes. Six, one abstaining approved.
Thank you. And I make motion for the planning commission to table the site plan recommendation until the applicant receives conditional use approval with the conditions from the township board for case JPC two zero 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 seven. Support for that?
Support.
Or by Mr. Zarzaki, any questions, comments on that motion? Seeing none, all, excuse me, go do roll call vote, Mr. Zarzaki.
Yes, Ms. Chick?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzno?
Yes.
Mr. Dryer?
Yes.
Ms. Infante?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Zarzaki, yes. Six, one abstaining approved.
Thank you. That concludes the unfinished business. So on, moving on to item eleven, we do not, as Ms. Bird provided to us, we don't have the minutes from the last meeting, August twenty-sixth, so we'll have to address that at the next meeting. Final call to the public, Mr. Lippens, or Ms. Bond and what we call the public, please state your name and address and limit of three minutes on your presentation. Mr. Akwinto, prior to doing that, Ms. Bond, Mr. Akwinto.
Thank you, sir. We do have the minutes from the nineteenth of August in to approve, though.
They were approved.
I apologize. Thank you. Thank you. I'm, I'm back in the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. No, I appreciate that point. I, I, I thought they were, but I'm glad Ms. Chick confirmed that. Well, thank you. All right, Ms. Bond, we'll go to the call of the public.
We are doing the final call to the public, so if anyone has anything that they would like
Um, so if anyone has anything that they would like to share, um, with the commissioners. At this time, you'll have three minutes to do so. Please raise your hand and then I can unmute you and you'll have three minutes to talk. Okay, not seeing any hands at this time. Um, so once more, I'll offer. If, if any members of the public do have something to say at this time, um, you do have three minutes in order to have your comment heard. Okay, not seeing any hands raised at this time. Um, Chair, I don't know if we want to close the final call.
Yeah, we will. Thank you, Ms. Bond. We'll move on to item thirteen, comments from commissioners. Uh, Mr. Kuzno will begin.
Uh, no comment, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dwyer.
Uh, nothing, thank you.
Ms. Infante.
None, thank you.
Mr. Akwinto.
None, thank you, sir.
Ms. Chick.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Mr. Zarzaki.
No additional comments, thank you.
None for me, thank you. Announce the next regular meeting, September sixteenth, twenty twenty, and make motion.
Support.
Word by Ms. Chick, any questions, comments on that? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Ayes have it. Uh, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.